Can I ask everybody to please stand so we can pledge allegiance?
Counselor Brown.
Present.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Coopero.
Here.
Counselor Vido.
Absent.
She called and said she wasn't going to be here tonight.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Counselor Hattlerberg.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Absent.
Melinda said she was running late, that she hopes to get here.
And Counselor Taylor. Nine members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
First order of business, we have memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the City Council for Mother's Day, whereas Mother's Day is celebrated on the second Sunday of May, and whereas the first official Mother's Day celebration was observed on May 10th, 1908, in Andrews Methodist Episcopal Church in Grafton, West Virginia, followed by a large ceremony at Wanamaker Auditorium in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and whereas Andrews Methodist Church was incorporated as the International Mother's Day Shrine on May 15th, 1962, as a shrine to all mothers and as a memorial to Anna Jarvis, and whereas Anna Jarvis advocated for the national observation of Mother's Day in memory of her mother, Ann Jarvis, who was a prominent social activist in the aftermath of the Civil War, and whereas on May 8th, 1914, Congress passed a law declaring the second Sunday in May as Mother's Day, and whereas President Woodrow Wilson issued a proclamation the following day, formally declaring the first Mother's Day, and whereas 2023 is the 115th anniversary of the first official Mother's Day observation, and whereas mothers have made immeasurable contributions toward building strong families, thriving communities, and a strong nation, and whereas the work of mothers is of paramount importance in the lives of their children, along with their families and communities, but is often undervalued, and whereas we honor ourselves and our mothers in the city of Chelsea and across the United States when we revere and emphasize the importance of the role of the home and family as a true foundation for our communities, and whereas mothers continue to rise to the challenge of raising their families with love, understanding, and compassion, while overcoming the challenges of modern society. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, recognize May 14th, 2023 as Mother's Day by celebrating the crucial role of mothers in the city of Chelsea and across the world, and support the goals and ideals of Mother's Day. Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion that we adopt unanimously under suspension, if that's okay.
Yep, seeing no objections, so move. You have the floor if you want to speak, Counselor.
Thank you, Ms. President. I just want to congratulate the maker for this resolution. As you know, we do a lot of resolutions, but this is a very special one. This is for the mothers, that we could publicly go out and say thank you for all that you've done for us, because we wouldn't be able to do for you if it wasn't for our mothers. So we're grateful for all those that have mothers and for those mothers that's passed on. We thank them for their lives and giving us life to be with us, to be here today, to continue their legacy. And it's just honorable to just say thank you to the mothers for all the work they do. This last few, three years, it's been really difficult on a lot of families, but mothers have been burdening a lot of it. So I'm just grateful that we are able to say hello to the mothers, wish them a happy Mother's Day. And I'm grateful to my moms for what she does and for the ladies up here, the mothers up here, and our council member status. Congratulations. Happy Mother's Day. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counselor. De Jesus, Counselor.
Similarly, I want to congratulate all the mamas out there, all the moms that had become teachers and doctors and all the above throughout COVID and afterwards for their children and their household, for being the rock in these households. You know, whether you are a mom, a grandmother, a neighborhood mom, right? Growing up, I had neighbors who would look out for me, who were not my mom, but they were calling mom and letting mom know, Norielis is over here, Norielis is over there. And so I am beyond grateful for how, as a community, we take care of our children. But mamas, I just want to acknowledge you today, celebrate you today, but also highlight that as we're celebrating, the municipality, your leaders, and the different departments here at City Hall are also organizing ways to include childcare, right? Because if you're a mom, you have children. And if you have children, sometimes it's hard for you to get back to work if that's what you wish to do. And so there are a lot of great events that I have posted on my Facebook and my social media platforms so that moms can get connected with some of the local workforce development efforts to get childcare providers that are affordable for our mamas that want to get back into the field. But if you're also a stay-at-home mom, I know, and I think many of us know, after quarantine, it is not easy. And so I salute you for everything that you do on a day-to-day.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Coopero.
I'd like to say happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. And a special happy Mother's Day to my wife, which is the mother of my children. So happy Mother's Day to all the mothers.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
I just want to echo what all my colleagues have mentioned, but also I want to mention those moms who struggle on a day-to-day and live in inhumane apartments and deal with subleasing and deal with trying to put food on their children's table. And I know the struggle, and I know it's harder in a city like Chelsea who's been deprived. I just know that we are here for you and we know your struggle, and we're going to try our best to be a great community and be a backbone for those moms who struggle every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next order of business. Next order of business, we have public speaking. Anybody here for public speaking? Take the podium, state your name and address for the record. And also, there's a sign and sheet over there. So if anybody's here for public speaking. State your name and address for the record, and you'll have four minutes.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Michelle Diaz, and I live over at 163 Pearl Street, Unit 3 in Chelsea, Massachusetts. For those of you that don't know me, I am the president of Broadway Capital Association in Chelsea for Broadway Capital Management. I am their president advocate. I also run a small ministry here in Chelsea for women of domestic violence and sexual abuse traumas, as well as I'm on the Housing Trust Fund Board here in Chelsea. I think some of the main things that I'd like to speak this evening that I've been given the floor to speak publicly is that it's been almost two years since we've been in a warfare with rising costs and inhumane living conditions for the city of Chelsea. I represent the association of all the tenants that live under the tenancy of Broadway Capital Management. The owner is Michael Vanu, and the manager is Carlos Almendares. After I was able to win victoriously in the court against him trying to remove me from my home for standing up for my tenant rights, he had a no-fault eviction on me, and I won. And I'm thankful to the Creator for that, and I'm thankful to the community that supported me in that fight. But aside from the fact that I was able to sign my lease, he has evaded in courts many families who are still living with no leases. He refuses to sign them. We have over 24 tenants that are today working three or four jobs that could not make it here today, so I am voicing for them, that two years went by since he made promises to change the cockroach infestation, mice infestations, roofs that are falling in, rats that are climbing on our balcony, trash infestations in the halls or the patio areas, mold issues, mildew issues, asthma that children are breathing in with these mold issues in the apartments. And two years have gone by, and City Hall, we feel, has not given us enough of the support that we need. He pays these fines. He says, yes, yes, we're going to get to it, we're going to fix it. And these families are now facing a terrible rent increase that starts from $200 to $2,000 for two-bedroom apartments that are falling apart. My heart is devastated. Chelsea, my heart is devastated because these families are now going to endure more traumas, more children that are sick and exposed to chinchas and bedbugs, cockroaches. I, myself, and the unit still have things that he did not fix. I still have a growing black mold issue in the bathroom that is causing us severe sinus issues. I have severe respiratory issues. And then just recently, we have, my neighbor who will be speaking briefly, but I just want to let you guys know that the worst case was that there was a gas leak from him pulling permits for 156 Pearl, no, Park and Pearl, here in City Hall.
One minute.
When I called the plumbing inspector, when I called the plumbing inspector, they came. They saw that the LLC was registered to another name, but the worst-case scenario was that National Grid came out and they said this family, the whole 165, 163, and 161, could have blown up in the middle of the night. And Broadway Capital Management would have gotten away with criminal activity because of negligence. Why negligence? Let me explain, ladies and gentlemen. This man pulled illegal permits with plumbers that did have no idea what they were doing on the first round of the job. The second round of the job, which is why my job is exhausting as an advocate, was that Bill, the plumbing inspector, met the American gentleman with the license, but we have video evidence of the Hispanic gentleman that were there doing the job. How does a family recover from a gas leak of that extent? The numbers were over 600 when National Grid got there.
Thirty seconds.
I just want to plead with the city of Chelsea for help. We have now a big infestation in our backyard that is also due to the Broadway Capital's negligence because they brought over 10 more trash barrels from the other units, and now I can't even step out into my balcony, and my kids are terrified from the rats coming out in no later than 4:35 in the afternoon. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Randall Jones. I live at 156 Park Street. My mother resided there all the way up until she passed away last year. She's been there since 1982. Michelle said quite a bit, but the rats and all the lies this gentleman is doing, the rats are so bad that they have them welts on the sides of their necks. And Michelle's daughter and son almost got attacked. This guy does not do nothing. I mean, we're here as friends to try to help out, like, somebody help us out. This gentleman is not replying with anything. I'm one of the tenants that got bumped up to $3,000 for a unit that it's not even $1,800 worth. This is the first time I ever spoke in front of Chelsea, and I hope it's going to be the last because we need help. And I just, I'm pleading with somebody, please, stop this gentleman. Put something together so we can do something about our property. We live in infestation of rats. Like Michelle said, you can't go outside. At nighttime, forget it. The rats are everywhere. Back when the Gulpins owned it back in the 80s, we had trash barrels in a shed. We never seen any rats in this yard at all. And if you did see a rat in the backyard, he was out of place. I've seen him pull some really shady stuff, and we need to all pull together and hopefully work out some sort of agreement with this gentleman, or somebody step in and help us. I'm not going to waste everybody's time here. I want to thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you.
Well, hi, everyone. I'm Natalia, and I live on 16 Cottage Street here in Chelsea. So I am a Chelsea resident, but I also am the housing organizer at La Colaborativa. And I'm here supporting these tenants that, you know, have just been in despair, right? The group is bigger. And what we're noticing is these crazy, outrageous, absurd rent increases, and families are living in horrible conditions. Just yesterday, I was meeting with them on a Sunday, of course. Yes, I met with them on a Sunday because this is a serious situation that we need to take serious. So that one story of that tenant without a window, half, he has half of a window on a third floor, has called ISD, and there has been, there hasn't been an inspection made yet. And just like Mike Vee and just like these tenants, there's many other tenants, right? We can't just point out Mike Vee, but there's, there's a lot of tenants that are just, I mean, sorry, a lot of landlords that are just not, are just like ignoring these tenants and their concerns. And it's frustrating, right? Because I want to be able to help them. We want to be able to help them. And so I, you know, as a housing organizer and as a Chelsea resident, right, as a mom, I think the city needs to do more implementation, more enforcement. Those fines, landlords like Mike Vee, they could just pay them. Can we do them on a regular basis? Can we do higher fines? Can we do more enforcement? And that's why we're here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking?
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Gloria Constanza. I live in 165 Pearl Street in Chelsea. I've been there for 13 years already. And I'm the person who have the problem with the gas leak. I was living at my house, in my apartment, for two months and a half, technically, with a gas leak, where I was constantly in the hospital. My kids, I have kids in my house, three younger ones. They were constantly in the hospital. We were constantly on the doctors, calling the doctors. The doctors always say they don't know what's wrong with my kids. They were just complaining about allergies, complaining that my kids, they end up having asthma, me having migraines and stuff like that. We always smelled the gas. I call Carlos, the manager building, and I'm like, Carlos, I smell gas. And he never answered me. I sent message. He never answered me, nothing like that. So one day, we were, my mother neighbor, she came downstairs, and she was like, listen, you don't feel sick? And I'm like, well, technically, I'm being feeling sick. What about you? And she's like, I'm being in the hospital too. And like, our bills from $10, $15 that we used to get a monthly, we started getting it from $200, $300, gas. So we decided, and we were like, let's just call the gas to see what's going on because imagine you getting a $10 bill of gas, and then you getting $300, $400. Bill is a big difference, you know? So we called the gas, and when they showed up, immediately, when they went down to the basement, immediately, the National Grid guy was like, everybody has to evacuate. Everybody has to evacuate right away. I was like, what's going on? And he's like, my machine technically is going over 6,000 whatever thing they have in there, the reading. And he was like, everybody has to be out. Where are we all going to be going from one second to another one? We didn't have nowhere to go. We called Carlos, and he asked for the 24 hours managing things that they have. I don't know much about the city policy or managerial things and stuff like that. This is my first time coming and talking. But I want you to understand my situation. We all got sick. We all did. He put our lives on danger, like the gas, gas company said to us. You guys, technically, you were, God was holding you guys. This building, the next building, it could explode anytime. You know, like, I don't understand how they're going to do something so unprofessional without no permits, without not letting nobody know, and like, how he can go to his house and be so, so calm, so easy without, when he knew the danger that we all had. It's like three families building in there. I got my four kids in my house, my husband and myself. And especially the one who got more sick is me. I work from home, and I was 24 hours in my house. And my kids, all the time when they were in my house, they were like, oh, mommy, my chest hurt. Mommy, my head hurts. And I would like, mommy, you just don't want to go to school. Imagine that. I feel guilty now because they came and complained. They came to complain on me, you know? But I didn't know what were, what were we going through with this. And I would like, no, it's just the flu, it's just the allergies. And then when we end up calling the National Grid, and they went over there, and they told us, immediately, you have to evacuate. And we find out he didn't have no permits. We called the City Hall a few times. The City Hall say, yo, yeah, we're going to send inspection to your house and blah, blah. The City Hall never went.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
So the City Hall never went. So this is what I'm saying, okay? Like, this is enough. Like, City Hall needs to put their hands on this kind of cases because it's too much. You know, like, I don't know who's Mike Vee. I never met him before. But he has put everybody in danger. What is it going to take for a family to die? So they can be like, oh, yeah, we have to do something about it? This needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Luz Ariana.
Good evening. My name is Luz Ariana.
Vengo de la 88 Washington Avenue, here in Chelsea.
I come from 88 Washington Avenue, here in Chelsea.
Bueno nosotros en mi familia hemos tenido problemas de enero.
We have had problems in my family since January.
Que se arrebentó la tubería de aguas negras en nuestro basement.
The sewers in the basement had burst.
De enero hasta la fecha pues nadie nos había ayudado, ni el dueño.
Since January to today, nobody has helped us. They're not the owner.
Mi hija se enfermó, yo también.
My daughter has gotten sick, and I have gotten sick.
Porque estamos oliendo ese mal olor de las aguas.
Because we are smelling all the time, the sewer water.
Este, hasta que mi esposo vino aquí al City Hall a ver si podían darnos una inspección.
So my husband came, until my husband came to City Hall and to see if we could be granted an inspection.
Porque el dueño no hacía nada. Él simplemente puso una bomba clandestina para sacar el agua hacia un parqueo que está ahí en la casa.
Because the landlord didn't do anything. He did like a Mickey Mouse job, putting a water pump illegally to deter the water to go to a parking lot right next to our home.
Mi esposo era el que limpiaba en el basement porque no había nadie quien mandara el dueño para limpiar esa suciedad.
My husband kept cleaning up that dirt in the basement because no, he wouldn't, the landlord wouldn't send anyone to clean, to clean up.
Y nosotros no hacíamos nada por el hecho de no meternos en problemas y el miedo de que no sabíamos sobre nuestros derechos.
And we wouldn't do anything because we were afraid of causing, we didn't want to cause any trouble or complain, and we were afraid because we truly didn't know our rights.
Este, hasta que bueno, llegaron los del City Hall hace como unas tres semanas atrás, hicieron inspección e hicieron que el dueño limpiara como que la tubería madre de lo que es el lado de afuera del edificio.
So about three weeks ago, the City Hall came or sent an inspector, and they sort of cleaned, italaron una.
Limpiaron, limpiaron el.
They just cleaned the main, the main pump.
Sí, tuvimos que buscar ayuda en la colaborativa también porque vimos que el dueño no quería ayudarnos en nada.
And we have to seek for help in La Colaborativa because we saw the owner wouldn't, wouldn't help us with anything.
Llegaron los bomberos porque también estaba echando como chispa los alambres que teníamos de electrodomésticos abajo.
Also, the fire department came because the artifacts that we have in the basement that are electric and are plucked, they were sparking with electricity and the contact of the water.
Entonces nos dijeron pues que no teníamos que estar viviendo desde que pasó el problema que fue en enero. No teníamos que estar viviendo ahí, sino que el dueño tenía que habernos puesto en un hotel.
And they also said that since that problem started in January, we should not have been living there, that the landlord should have put us in a hotel elsewhere. We should not be living like that.
Thirty seconds.
Y ahí es donde entra la colaborativa y nos ha ayudado, y hasta la fecha estamos ahorita en un hotel.
That's when La Colaborativa stepped in and has helped us, and right now we are living in a hotel.
Nos sentimos ya un poco seguros porque ellos nos han ayudado mucho a no estar con ese mal olor y con esas condiciones del apartamento donde todavía está el agua ahí.
We feel a little bit safer now because we don't have to be inhaling all that dirt that is in the basement that's still there.
Gracias a la colaborativa que nos dijo nuestros derechos y nos ha ayudado, es como nosotros hemos tenido valor de hablar sobre esto.
And I'm grateful to La Colaborativa for informing us of what our rights are and has given us the strength to come and voice our problems.
Time is up. Thank you. Any other speakers for public speaking? Seeing no other speakers, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Thank you. Next order of business. Next order of business, we have approval of the council meeting minutes of April 24th, 2023. Seeing no objections, so move. Thank you, Counselor. Next order. Next order of business, we have communications from the city manager. We have a copy of a communication receipt from Midterm City Manager Ned Keefe regarding the fiscal year 24 budget. Dear counselors, enclosed you will find my proposed fiscal year 2024 budget. The budget funds city expenditures at $98,768,227 and school department expenditures at $132,367,509 for a total budget of $231,135,736. The school department budget has increased by 11.82%. Most of it paid from new Chapter 70 funding generated by the Student Opportunity Act. The city expenditures have increased by 4.95%. Most of the city increases are reflected in salary accounts. This is due mainly to raises required in collective bargaining agreements and to the addition of new positions in the operating budget. These new positions, a total of 11, will improve the delivery of services to residents and allow the city to increase internal capacity for handling new projects and programming implemented with ARPA funding. I have enclosed a listing and rationale for the new positions, which we can discuss in further detail during budget deliberations. The city is able to absorb. The city is able to absorb the increase in new personnel because of our very favorable financial position. This year, the city will propose the modest use of reserves to support the budget, two hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars, an amount that aligns with prior years. You will note that this year's regional school district expenditure has increased by one hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars to one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That line item now includes the second payment on the debt for the new northeast regional vocational high school, a total debt service payment of three hundred eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars. That debt service figure will rise gradually to approximately one point nine million dollars annually, starting in fiscal year twenty-six. My staff and I look forward to meeting with you in subcommittee. Sincerely, Ned Keefe, acting city manager.
Chair recognizes Counselor Haddelberg.
Accepting file of communication.
Under suspension, seeing no objection, will be something coming up on the new business?
Next order of business, we have a copy of a communication received from interim city manager Ned Keefe regarding a notice of residency waiver intent. Dear counselors, pursuant to administrative code, section one dot twelve dot O two, I am writing to notify you that it is my intention to appoint Mr. Y Saret of Malden, Massachusetts to the part-time English language program instructor position for the city of Chelsea and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the administrative code, part four, section one dot twelve dot O one. Mr. Saret has several years' experience as a teacher and works currently for the Chelsea Public Schools. Separately, a request for conflict of interest law exemption is submitted to council. A copy of his resume is attached. There were no Chelsea resident applicants for this solicitation round. In accordance with section one dot twelve dot O two, I requested you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counselor recognizes, uh, the chair recognizes Counselor Cooperrow.
Accepting.
Accepting, following under suspension, seeing no objection, so move. Next order?
Next order of business, we have a copy of a communication received from interim city manager Ned Keefe requesting a conflict of interest law exemption. Dear counselors, the Division of Recreation and Cultural Affairs wishes to hire a Chelsea School Department employee, Mr. Y Saret of Malden, to a part-time, six-hours-per-week position providing instructional support for its English language program. Because Mr. Saret is an existing municipal employee with a financial interest in this separate matter, he needs an exemption vote by the city council from the statutory conflict of interest laws. I respectfully request that the city council approve this exemption. All work provided by Mrs. Saret for the Division of Recreation and Cultural Affairs will be outside of his normal hours as a school department employee. He meets all the statutory requirements for the grant of an exemption. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Chair recognizes Counselor Cooperrow to accept and follow communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business?
Next order of business, we have a communication received from interim city manager Ned Keefe regarding notice of residency waiver intent. Dear counselors, pursuant to administrative code, section one dot twelve dot O two, I am writing to notify you that it is my intention to appoint Mr. K Porter of Boston, Massachusetts to the part-time English language program instructor position for the city of Chelsea and to grant him a waiver from the residency requirement set forth in the administrative code, part four, section one dot twelve dot O one. Mr. Porter has over ten years' experience as a language teacher. A copy of his resume is attached. There were no Chelsea applicants for this solicitation round. In accordance with section one dot twelve dot O two, I have requested you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counselor Cooperrow.
I have one question.
What's your, what's your motion, accepting file of communication under suspension?
Yes, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, counselor.
All these things I see all the time and what always catches my eye is a simple one. There were no Chelsea applicants for this, for solicitation round. So there's never a Chelsea resident. Every time we come here, we get all these positions and we're waiving everybody and there's never a Chelsea resident. Why? Don't Chelsea resident go applications? How do you tell them if there's jobs? How do they know? They go on the computer? You put it on the paper? I cannot believe that there's not even one Chelsea resident that applies for these positions.
You finished, counselor?
Yeah.
All right, Counselor De Jesus.
I just wanted to briefly mention that I have, um, I'm in the process of inviting, um, different departments to attend a subcommittee meeting, um, with regards to this concern. I know that many of my colleagues have the same concern that, um, uh, the counselor just mentioned, um, and we're not just looking to understand if there are no qualified applicants in Chelsea, but also looking for potential training opportunity to make sure that our local residents are qualified for these positions. More to come on the subcommittee.
Thank you, counselor. Any other counselors? Seeing none, uh, next order of business?
Next order of business, we have a communication received from interim city manager Ned Keefe regarding free cash appropriation requests. Dear counselors, I am writing to follow up on the February notification provided to you that the Massachusetts Department of Revenue has certified free cash for the city at the close of fiscal year twenty twenty-two as follows. General fund, seventeen million, ninety-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Sewer enterprise fund, four million, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Water enterprise fund, two million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. These reserves reflect the city's positive financial condition. Given these surpluses, I am writing now to seek reinvestment of a portion of these funds into programs, projects, and efforts that will continue to benefit our residents. I am also looking forward to cover some deficits for fiscal year twenty-three that have already surfaced. Specific requests are as follows. Bunker Hill Scholarship Program for Chelsea High School students, one hundred seventy-six thousand. Chelsea's four-hundredth anniversary, one hundred thousand. City audit services, eleven thousand. Mill Creek Riverwalk Project, fifty thousand. Powderhorn Hill Staircase Refurbishment Project, two hundred thousand. DPW Buildings and Grounds Work, two hundred and fifteen thousand. DPW Buildings and Grounds Overtime, ten thousand. Street and Sidewalk Overtime, sixty thousand. Sewer Enterprise Infrastructure, fifty thousand. IT Department, sixty-one thousand. Other deficits, there are four other accounts that are currently running deficits that need funding. I do not expect other deficits will surface as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, but these four accounts are pressing. Outside legal services, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Unemployment, ninety-two thousand. City clerk department redistricting, nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty, and DPW solid waste disposal, fifty-five thousand.
Counsel Haddelberg moves to accept and follow communications. There will be something coming up on the new business?
If I could actually say something briefly?
You have the floor, counselor.
So just for the public, we have a number of financial orders that are gonna come up during the course of the meeting. Um, each of those relates to each of the line items that are clerk read out here. Uh, when they come up, I or possibly another counselor will move those, uh, to a second reading and probably in bulk because there's, we basically just read the point. And, uh, and then they will come up at our next meeting to be actually voted on.
Thank you, counselor. Next order of business?
Next order of business, we have a copy of a communication received from interim city manager Ned Keefe regarding the Clark Avenue Middle School School Surplus Balance and Transfer. Dear counselors, I am writing to inform the council that the Clark Avenue Middle School Project Fund has a surplus balance of two million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents and may now be closed. This notable surplus achievement is the result of the city and the school department staff's collaborative approach with its contractors and consultants to pursue the highest standards for the building within a realistic and balanced approach. The city auditing department has confirmed the surplus based upon its comprehensive review of the Clark Avenue Middle School Reconstruction Project Fund. This effort required the reconciliation of the city general ledger to the Massachusetts School Building Authority accounts for rec, for recording and confirmation of all eligible costs and the determination that all project obligations have been satisfied. Please see the attached project cost summary. I would like to request the council approve the transfer of the surplus funds in the amount of two million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents to the school capital stabilization fund. The school capital stabilization fund is a source of capital for school building improvements that the council may appropriate for a future school capital project. I have attached a recommended order for the purpose.
Chair recognizes, um, Counselor Haddelberg to accept and follow communication under suspension and there will be some coming up on the new business.
Next order of business, communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from the Director of Permitting and Land Use Planning regards to zoning amendment, section thirty-one dash eleven, Community Improvement Trust Fund. Dear Counselor Robinson, at a meeting of the Chelsea Planning Board held on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, at which a quorum was present and a public hearing was held, the planning board reviewed the proposed zoning amendment to delete section thirty-four dash eleven, Community Improvement Trust Fund. The board voted unanimously to recommend that the council approve the amendment as proposed. Section thirty-four dash eleven, Community Improvement Trust Fund be deleted and section thirty-four dash twelve, Waterfront Improvement Trust Fund be numbered as section thirty-four dash eleven and sections thirty-four dash twelve through thirty-four dash one thirty-three be reserved.
Counsel Brown moves to accept and follow communication and also call for a public
Next order of business, we have a copy of a communication received from the Traffic and Parking Commission concerning the May second, twenty twenty-three meeting, agenda item number eleven.
Counselor Cooperrow, accepting file of communication, you wanna speak on the matter?
Accept the file of communication.
All right, thank you, counselor. Next order?
Next order, we move on to new business. We have a copy of an order received from Council President Leo Robinson, ordered that section twenty-four dash one oh six J of the Code of Ordinances, City of Chelsea, Massachusetts, read as follows. Quote, "Any relief from off-street parking requirements in the zoning ordinance shall disqualify that location from participating in the residential parking sticker program. Any relief from off-street parking requirements in this zoning ordinance will still allow that location's residents to participate in the visitor parking pass program."
Counsel Brown moves to, accept and follow communication and set up a public hearing on the matter?
Planning board. And move to the planning board.
And move to the planning board.
Next, we have an order introduced by counselors Robinson and Recuperow, order requesting the acting city manager provide an update to the community and city council on the Memorial Day Program, specifically where it's being held, what the theme of the program is, and how the public relations are being handled.
Doctor, suspension, no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, counselor.
I don't know how to say this. All the time. And I can't, I, how was it being? How did you? I, I, I don't know. Let me put it in a simple way. Each year we have one and everything changes and we never know exactly what goes on. We know after the planning is all done. We should be notified ahead of time what goes on and how to do it and what is the situation and what's gonna happen, what was not gonna happen. We know the exact day when it's gonna happen and say, this is what we're gonna do. We would like to be noticed, advanced, they like to tell us, tell the rest of the counselors what the agenda's gonna be and how you're gonna do it. What are you, how are you gonna? What? I don't even know how to explain it. Each year is the same thing. It's the same problem. They never tell you, we never know exactly how the event is gonna be done. We don't know. We know at the end, and this is what happens. And then, I, there's complaints from people that the event is not what they expected to be. Either there's, many times, there's many different things that go wrong, but we should be, if there's a problem with money or there's a problem with anything, you should tell us in advance what goes on and we will remedy the situation instead of waiting after everything happens. I, I believe that my fellow counselors are right. They should, you should tell us in advance. The veteran department should tell us in advance what he's gonna do or what they're gonna do. That, that, it's plain and simple, that's what you should do. And I don't think that any of us got notified to tell us what the event is gonna be like or what they're gonna do. I don't think so. None of us know anything. So I believe that we should all be involved to understand veterans deserve a little more than they get it and they should get it. And we should provide it for them, but if we don't know what we're providing, what can we do? So I believe that from now on, whenever you do anything like this, the city council should be informed and we should be aware of what he's gonna do or what he's not gonna do, what the event encompasses. That's it. Just, we should be informed. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Next order of business?
Next, we have an order introduced by counselors Robinson and Recuperow, ordered requesting the acting city manager provide an update to the city council on how many veterans are receiving services from the city of Chelsea, including how many are participating in the food program and receiving fuel and heating assistance.
Counselor Cooperrow.
Accept and follow the communication if there's no exception. I mean, no.
No, no objections.
Doctor under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, counselor.
Okay, I'm back again with the same stuff. This is the same thing. How many of us, you can ask any of us, I don't even think any of us know how many veterans receive these things. How many? Few, what do they do? That, so we should be updated when, how many veterans actually get in these benefits? We should all know how many they're actually giving to these veterans and who they are and, not even who they are, how many they're getting, what is the service for? So we should be aware of what's going on. And the situation is that again, we don't know what's going on. We're not kept updated. The whole issue here is, we should all be kept updated of the services that the veterans are getting. And I believe it's only fear that us, which appropriate the funds for it, should know what the funds are being used for and who's getting these funds. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Next order of business?
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, ordered that the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a conflict of interest exemption pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, Section twenty B, for the part-time technical support position for Chelsea Community Schools to be held by Mr. Y Saret effective immediately.
Counselor Taylor moves for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
We have a roll call vote on approving the conflict of interest exemption, a yes vote to approve and no vote to reject. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recuperow?
Yes.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Haddelberg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent. Conflict is approved?
Next order of business?
Next, we have an order introduced by Council President Robinson, ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars from free cash to the Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program expense account to provide tuition funding for Chelsea High School graduates.
Chair recognizes Counsel Haddelberg.
I'd like to make a motion that we take this order and each of the remaining financial orders related to the appropriations for free cash that we just read and move all of them through a second reading.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have the clerk call them out. And we will move them all to a second reading.
So in addition to that one, we have one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to fiscal year twenty-three city manager community events expense account for Chelsea's four-hundredth anniversary celebration event. We have one, eleven thousand dollars in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three legislative professional services expense account for audit services. We have fifty thousand dollars from free cash to a new fiscal year twenty-three CIP project account for the Mill Creek Riverwork Project. We have two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three CIP Historic Staircase Rehabilitation Project on Powderhorn Hill. One hundred and thirty thousand dollars from free cash to fiscal year twenty-three CIP Public Building Project for new windows in the city council chambers. Fifty thousand dollars in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three DPW Structures and Grounds Building Maintenance Account. Thirty-five thousand dollars in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three DPW Structures and Grounds Lighting Account. Ten thousand dollars in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three DPW Structures and Grounds Overtime Account. Sixty thousand dollars in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three DPW Streets and Sidewalks Overtime Account. Fifty thousand dollars in sewer retained earnings to the fiscal year twenty-three DPW Sewer Enterprise Infrastructure Account for emergency sewer collapse repair work on Broadway. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three Law Department Legal Services Account. Ninety-two thousand in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three Employee Benefits Unemployment Account. Nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three City Clerks Accounts for redistricting. Sixty-one thousand in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three IT Department for power outage, equipment replacement, and cybersecurity enhancements. Fifty-five thousand in free cash to the fiscal year twenty-three DPW Solid Waste Trash Pickup and Disposal Account for curbside mattress collection and recycling. And we have the Clark Avenue Middle School Surplus Balance and Transfer, transferring surplus funds from the Clark Avenue Middle School Fund to the School Capital Stabilization Fund in the amount of two million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cents. All moved to a second reading. No further business, public announcements?
Any public announcements?
Yeah, I got a public announcement. Yeah, should I have one?
Oh, oh, you have the floor, Counsel Recuperow.
I guess I have more than one.
I guess I have more than one. There seems to be problems all over the city with mattress pickup. I don't know how this works, but they're not picking them up and they're being left in the streets. They should be picked up. Uh, three-one-one, you call them, they're supposed to tell these people to pick them up. Uh, over here, I see we have all kinds of money that we're going to give them, fifty-five thousand, fifty-five thousand, but they don't pick them up. So how do we solve this problem? How are we going to fix it? I don't know what the situation is, but I, I guess we're going to have to fix it because it's kind of a, we pay, but they don't do their job. They should do their job. They should pick up the mattresses when they call. They shouldn't be left in the street because the taxpayers pay for that to get picked up. So there's mattresses left around the city. I seen a bunch of them. I see them. And it's not something that, uh, it's not there. And the next one is, when they do construction work, I can't figure out how city, how they have no regard and respect for the people that live here. They should put signs all over the place to tell them, you can't go here, you can't go there. It's too much. I've been saying that for years already and I can't understand why they just, they don't care about the people. We, the counselors, should make them care because the people here are the ones that put us there and they don't seem to respect their wishes. They just block up everything. Oh, well, you have to do the construction. Nobody's telling you, you don't have, you can't do the construction. Yes, you can do the construction. The whole problem is, at least tell the people you're doing the construction so that way they can avoid all the unnecessary headaches that they have to go through. That's all. That, that's, that's the only thing that, it's important to me. It's important to me that the people get a fair shake to show them that big government cares about people. Even though we are a small city, we should still care about the people that live here. That is the problem. We don't seem to care. Whoever's doing all these things don't care because there's plenty of complaints all the time about the roads and how it is. They block one, this city's a complete gridlock. It's all one ways. This city is mostly all one way. If you close two, three streets and you don't tell them how to do it, you're making a big headache for the people that live there. But at least if you give them a heads up, it won't be so bad. So that's all the reasons. Please help the people of our city get around better and don't think that they don't watch. They do watch and they see what happens. So please help them and try to make the right way for them to go in and out of their city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Taylor?
So I'd just like to remind everybody that, uh, a week from tomorrow, the Chelsea Rotary Club is having its fundraiser at Anthony's of Malden. Um, uh, if you would like to attend or just buy a ticket that will, uh, allow you to be in the running for a first, second, or third prize at our, at our Derby. Um, uh, please don't hesitate to contact me, six one seven eight seven two three one seven four. And, uh, uh, you can still call me at that number for any other issues that come up. I'd like to say, um, one other thing about, uh, uh, it's getting warm outside. People are walking their dogs out more. Please, it is an ongoing problem with lots of complaints about people leaving their dog waste all over the ground, everywhere, on the sidewalks, in the parks. Pick it up. There's bags at the dog waste stations all over this city. Please be respectful. Have respect for our city. Have respect for yourselves. Please pick up the dog waste. Thank you.
Counsel Melinda?
I would like to make a very happy announcement, um, my, to my sister in service. I want to give Judith Garcia a huge congratulations. Um, she got engaged on Friday, so I am super, super happy for her. Que vive el amor, mi gente. So, mi vida, I'm so happy and yeah.
Congratulations.
She was Cupid, so.
I was Cupid, yeah. I hooked them up.
Counsel Brown?
Uh, just want to let residents of Chelsea, especially the runners, if you like to run, um, the Chelsea Chase Five with the Boys and Girls Club in collaboration with the Police Department, they'll be having their annual road race this Saturday. Um, you can get in contact with them either by calling the police station or the Boys and Girls Club. I did talk to them today. Um, they are looking for runners. Um, so I told them, I'm getting old, I'll be a walker. So, um, I'll be walking, but they are looking for runners. So if you like to run, um, to support a worthy cause, please come out on Saturday morning on every Ave, Chelsea Station. They'll be having the registration and after the five K, they'll be having, uh, award ceremony in awe, so they'll be having a little food for just gathering and thanking the folks for coming out. So it's a worthy cause. Um, it's all for our community. It's two great organizations, Chelsea Police Department and our Boys and Girls Club. And I look forward to seeing you if you can make it out on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel De Jesus?
Thank you, Counsel President. Um, I just want to give a big shout out to Nicola Richardson and all of the leaders up at Margolis. Um, two sixty Clark rocked it on Sunday. Um, they had a Mother's Day celebration. Nicola, you are an amazing leader. Um, thank you so much for, for putting it together. Um, I was joined by Counsel President, uh, Leo Robinson and, um, also, uh, joined, uh, the festivities, Matt Frank from the Housing Authority and Paul Nowicki, the new, um, uh, director of the Public Housing Authority. And so I just wanted to shout that out. Um, a few updates, um, pedestrian safety. Um, I have a meeting in the works, um, to potentially have a onsite meeting, one of our elderly buildings in District Three. Um, with a representative from our planning department to ensure, um, that they can hear about some of the pedestrian safety concerns, especially since Upper Broadway will be in the works this year. We want to make sure that we are combining, um, the vision for this beautiful renification of Broadway, um, down in my corner of the city, but also taking into account some of the concerns that the current pedestrians, anyone who is, um, uh, handicap or, or challenges having, um, getting around in that corner of Chelsea. And so more to come on that date. Um, there is a June fourth meeting with Traffic Commission to talk about, uh, the speed bump, uh, that I've requested for Clinton. Um, we have a, in the works also, um, the fixtures for a light pole that is hap, um, that has not been working on Warren Street. So I just wanted to let the residents of Warren Street, um, know that that is in the works. And for anyone, um, in the city, um, quick fact, um, I was able to meet with our city, um, interim manager this morning and, um, the wooden light poles in the city of Chelsea are actually not owned by the city. The wooden light pole itself is owned by Verizon and so there is a process to that, but please, um, do note that that is in the works and DPW is on it. Um, and last but not least, we are celebrating, um, this whole month, um, women in the community and I just wanted to update that with the beautiful woman on the council and some of the beautiful women in this building and the different departments here at City Hall. We will be hosting our first, um, at the moment, internal meeting for the Women's Commission here in Chelsea. And so we were talking about how to uplift women voices here in this building with all the beautiful leaders that we have here, but also bringing it out to the community and make sure that the voices, um, the concerns, the ideas, um, the growth opportunities that our women want to see in Chelsea, um, are, are in the works in, in our community. And so that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Teneri Garcia?
So I just want to, um, mention that as a resident, as a city council and as a mother, it is very disturbing to me to see and to hear, uh, the stories today. Um, I think that we, as a city council, need to do a better job in the city and to protect these tenants. Um, I feel like money talks and we need to do better in protecting the residents, our mothers, and our children. Um, those stories were extremely scary to me and, uh, terrifying, really. Um, I just feel that we need to do better and, and the community needs to know that we're there with them and we're here for them. Um, and on another note, I want to celebrate our mothers. Uh, they do an amazing job and it's a tough job. I think it's the toughest job on this planet and, um, and we rock at it at times, so, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Garcia, you want to speak? If I may, on the front of your packet tonight, this is the schedule of the budget hearing. Well, I'd ask if I can step down and have the vice president take the chair?
Sure, you can speak.
Well, thank you, Counselor. As a courtesy, we stapled the budget hearings to the front of the packet so everybody would know when the budgets were going to be taking place. And I'd like to encourage this board, if you're not going to be able to make the meetings, please give us a call so we're not sitting around waiting on a quorum. You know, show some courtesy to those who are here and who are waiting, um, to get the meeting going. That's all I wanted to relay. And also, I want to say to the mothers, have a very happy Mother's Day, those on the council and those out in the community. Thank you, Counselor. Oh, keep the chair.
No, the chair is yours.
Oh, keep the chair.
The chair is yours, President.
Keep the chair.
Yours, President. Got any more announcements?
Yeah.
Any more announcement? Any moment of silence?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um, I just want, uh, two announcements of, um, you know, moments of silence, if you please join me. Um, Tony Smith, longtime resident of Chelsea, um, former, um, city worker here. Um, for those that knew him, know he's a doo whopper of music, a lover of music, um, passed away. And also, we've all heard the sad news would happen here in our community, um, with a young lady who lost her life here tonight. I'd be remiss if we didn't have prayer or silent prayer in our own ways to that family, to the families. We out here highlighting mothers on this beautiful week leading into Mother's Day weekend and, um, we lose one of our mothers here today, um, at the hands of violence. So let us keep our community in prayer. Let us also remem, remind ourselves that this is Well-Health Month and we should also be happy and glad. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
No more silence? You have the floor.
I also want to share, uh, my thought and prayers with, uh, the family of this, uh, mother who got killed today. And, uh, it's really bad and sad news. Uh, also, I want to have a moment of silence for, uh, immigrant, immigrant people that got run over in Texas and the shooting in Texas, uh, in, all the shootings, killings that has been around the United States and it's, it's going crazy and I thought and prayers are with them.
We conclude the meeting now.